We are going to begin our public hearing regarding the urban wildland interface boundary. Part of this needs to be a moment where we, just to set the, clarify what this public hearing is about. The, currently, we have a urban-wildland interface boundary. We have, over the past few months, been looking at that boundary. And we are potentially going to make a change to that boundary. I say potentially because you don't have to, but that's up for discussion and action not tonight, but it'll be in the following, following meeting. But we'd like to have any public comment regarding the establishment of the boundary. Do you want to add anything else to that? It will affect, potentially, where we require fire sprinklers. If the ordinance stays the way it is, it, anything in that boundary will require fire sprinklers. And it also will, more than likely, affect the building code standards depending on where, at, in that boundary you build and the conditions that you build under. So is there public comment on the establishment of the boundary? Anybody signed up for that?
There's one person signed up, but I don't know if it's for the public hearing. Daniel?
No, it's really okay. All right, well, I suspect that we can certainly move on to the next section without closing public hearing.
We'll leave it open until somebody comes in.
For another few minutes. I'm not interested in leaving it open for very long, but we will go ahead and let's take up the discussion. Are you here to provide public comment on the wild-urban, wildland-urban?
Yes, I am.
All right, then you're up.
Oh, okay.
We need to do the sign and the back sheet, and then when you begin. I don't want to be getting in the back part. All right, you're up. Can you please make sure that you, your comments are in the form of a statement?
Okay. Well, can I hear what you guys have to say first, so I can be more educated?
You'll hear the discussion on afterward, but public hearing is right now. You had the opportunity to pick up all the information from the city office prior to this.
Okay, well, the stuff I'd say, though, isn't, I mean, I'd like to be a little more educated before. So I have to make more sense.
We're not going to educate you tonight through this process. So if you're willing to listen, you can listen to our follow-up discussion.
Yeah, let me do that. Yeah, I'd rather, before I say stuff, know what's going on for sure.
Okay, and...
Because it may be a red one, what I said.
Tell me who you are and where you live.
Skyhawk Way, Paul, Iowa.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah. Whoops, excuse me.
All right. Anybody else on that list to provide public comment during this hearing? All right. Let's, at the risk of being interrupted, let's dig into the animal code.
Well, we...
So we made a long, we made a long motion last time to clarify, we really clarified 1018A, right? And the paragraphs under.
Mm-hmm.
And added the surface animals and the exotic animals that are licensed in the motion, right? And then, follow-up to that, I guess Nelson, you had some, some discussion?
Yeah, I had some discussion with, with William Taylor about the subsection 1018B. And we took the, when we implemented the new code, we didn't really address the larger lot size and keeping them at parity with where they were before the code change, in terms of what they could or couldn't have on their, their lots. So William and I spent hours working through this. But what we did was we took and applied the point values. Now, you'll look at some of these and you wonder why. I guess the planning commission, when they initially reviewed this, on the larger lots, they discounted it by 80% instead of 100. So when the numbers were put forward, their numbers were 80% of what the smaller lot sizes were. So some of them, we didn't do exactly, you know, half points or whatever, cut them in half. And then there were a few that, we adjusted the square footage so that the math worked out. Because if you're going to have four cows on an acre, 12,000 doesn't work, because then you're over an acre, because you're at 48,000 square feet, so 45. I mean, just little, I hate to say ticky tacky things, but little things like that that just needed to be clarified. And then, as I was going through the memo, the paperwork that was sent, it looks like we're going to, in addition to that, add in miniature horse under the mule, donkey, alpaca, llama, female goat portion, so that existing rights that people have can be included in there, because they're allowed now.
Is this on A or B?
This is on B.
Miniature horses in that?
Yeah.
I see, I see big whores.
I didn't see that on there.
It's in this chart.
Well, we didn't get that chart. Oh, wait.
Yeah, you didn't.
Yeah, that came...
I've got a copy of the two.
Do you have the other one?
That was...
Oh, yeah, here it is, okay.
So...
There's like 15 different...
The other recommendation was to make the cat and dog requirement the same on both tables, not just B. Because when we talked about it, typically with a larger lot, you know, on the, what we put forward, there's a max of three dogs and three cats, but on the smaller ones, we didn't. Now, whether the semantics...
Is that a max per lot?
Per lot, right. Now, the reality of it is, based on points, they're going to hit that anyways, but I think it's more of a, we don't want to, we want to make this easy for staff. When somebody says, how many can I have? That way, they're not playing games with numbers. It's like, as many, whether you've got this size a lot or a larger lot, it'd be the same. I think beyond that, if you had a larger lot, we got Mr., should I listen to Ram?
Yeah, I remember him.
Yeah, he was at a planning commission meeting that I went to earlier in the year. And I think you've got a conditional use for more than what we currently allow number of dogs. I think the intent there is, is if we get outside of, you know, a couple of pets, with that type of a thing, where our number one's the complaint, with the sheriff and his dogs and the noise, that we have a way to kind of control that through conditional use still. But that was...
So we are going to do conditional use? Because I thought we were getting involved.
Well, we are, but up to the limits. So if we put three maxes, if somebody comes in and says, I want to have four, or five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and they, there's a process they go through.
I thought we eliminated that process.
Well, you'd still have that, because the way the code is written regards to what we do, it's either included or it's excluded. And if it's, and if it's not, then you can enter this area where the workaround always has been with city code. It doesn't matter whether we're talking Elk Ridge, Payson, whatever city, you can come in, you can file for a conditional use outside of what the code allows. I mean, that's why a conditional use exists.
But I thought we removed that conditional use aspect out of this code, so the staff would take care of it.
Specifically, that has been pulled out of here, because the, our city attorney, who is basically going around the state and preaching this to everybody, is saying that conditional uses, if you don't approve a conditional use, it won't stand up in court, period. And he's recommended to everybody to get it totally out of your codes. And so, basically, there is no conditional work use, conditional use workaround here, because we haven't added the language into the code. So if they, if they have a problem with this, they have to come in and ask to amend the code.
Right.
I'm just trying to think outside the box here for a second.
Which is why I thought we didn't want to put maxes on it, and that it's up to them of how many, and how to use their points.
Yeah, well, we can do that. We can do that. I mean, it's, the only reason it's on there was that was the recommendation after William and I talked about it, he said, well, let's do it. So if it doesn't have to be there, we can...
You know I don't like maxes on any of it, because I don't think you should be able to tell someone, you can only have two dogs and two cats.
I'm okay with that. I mean, it's not, this is not carbon stone.
That's my own opinion.
It's not carbon stone. This is a recommendation.
Yeah, no, I know, I'm just...
So, I'm okay with that.
So I don't know, City Council got the email that Jared Peterson sent out.
Yes, and his is around that, because of larger lots, we're going to come in and tell them they can have three, but somebody on a smaller lot can have...
Which I totally agree with him on that.
One of the ideas that he threw out was have the max, have a maximum of three per acre was an idea. And so then, if you have a, a couple acres, you can have three more. So basically, what, in essence, what you're really doing is you're adjusting the, the numbers on, on dogs and cats.
Let me pause here for a second, because I'm going to close public hearing. Okay? So public hearing is closed. Okay, continue. Go ahead.
So, I, I've just thrown that out as a, as another possibility here. If the, if the concern, I mean, when you start, when you start to look at it, how many lots around town are we, do we have, and are we going to have as things build out that are, that are over one acre lots?
Yeah.
It's, it's a fairly limited number of lots.
Yeah, it is. But I don't think it's fair to say, if you have seven acres, you can only have three dogs. Like, I thought that was...
Well, and that's it, and that's what...
That's why, I do like that, I think that's a good idea.
That's why he's saying, you know, basically, in essence, what he's saying is either write that in just straight out as that, or else adjust the points to, to be equivalent to the three dogs, three cats per acre.
Or let the points just...
Just let, let, let probably they all decide how they want to apply the points.
I think people need to be able to decide how they apply the points, because I have a really hard time with somebody with an acre lot saying, you can only have three dogs, but somebody sitting right down here in the senior living that's on...
Can also have three dogs.
Yeah.
An 18 acre can have two dogs? Like, I'm not okay with that. You know what I mean? If we have the point system, and you let people decide how they want to use their points. Everybody has the same amount of points based upon their acreage.
Okay.
And I don't know, to me, that just seems the most fair. And then...
Yeah, it does, me too.
We go from there, right? Other than, I don't know, with our other code, so you can go after it with other things. If it's a nuisance, right? Like, the dogs barking or whatever.
Yeah. So, you know, how well that does work?
Let's pretend like it does for five minutes, why we mess this.
Rooster was dealt with.
So if you let that dog, you could have, what, 10 dogs per acre?
Well, yeah, if that's how you chose to use your acreage.
I don't agree with the point system to begin with, which is why I voted no last time on it, because I think the points are way too low.
What do we want a max per acre, then? I don't know.
You know what? Let's just strike that, and let's move on.
I'm just not into one of these, so I don't know what they want.
Strike the max, we just come over here to this column.
I mean, 10 dogs per acre seems totally crazy to me. I wouldn't want to live with somebody next to somebody that has 10 dogs on an acre.
That's got six acres, that's 60 dogs. It could be.
You could have a wiener dog farm.
Yeah, but if you have that many, you're going to have, the cost to feed that many dogs would be...
My dream will come true.
I just, yeah, I don't, I think the points on dogs and cats should not be what they are, which is...
Well, how, what, people that you've talked to while rewriting this, Nelson, with three per acre, is that reasonable?
Well, I've got feedback both ways. My struggle with this is, from David Church's own mouth, as he sat here in the meetings in the past when we visited this, he said, if you went out and you started a brand-new town, and you went and you put together new code, the number one item on the top of that list that would not be allowed in any city would be dogs, followed by cats, followed by people? The reality of it is, those are the friction points. If you were to take a look at what staff, meaning, you know, where code enforcement, what Deputy Rhodes deals with, stray dogs, stray cats, I mean, it's a little, the frequency numbers are there, because some people have a mentality of, you know what? If I was on a farm, I could let my cats and dogs run free, and so, I may not own five acres, but there's five acres around me, so the cat and dog can, or dogs can run free and roam and do their thing in neighbors' flower beds and their lawns and...
So, the planning commission spent a lot of time on this and did a lot of work on it. What if we put the numbers on dogs and cats back to what they originally recommended on both charts?
That would be fine if we don't count the indoor dogs.
I agree, if we don't count indoor dogs. But if you're going to tell me what I can have in my house, then I think the pets are numbered differently.
If you, if you want to be the crazy cat lady and have 50 cats in your house, you can do it without me sparring.
Exactly. If I want to be a crazy cat lady, you let me be crazy cat lady.
The problem we have with that is enforcement, right? That leads to a humongous enforcement issue, and we can't enforce it if we don't. If we let people have as many indoor pets as they want, and they don't count...
So you're going to get a search permit and go knock on the door to see how many dogs somebody has inside their house?
No, but if you get a complaint from the neighbor, the neighbor says you've got eight dogs in your house, that's when you go. You don't...
Well, I know, but you still can't.
You know?
You can't make entry to the house without a, I mean, right?
The thing about small, the small lots and the smaller homes, in my opinion, is they really do not have the facility for, like, three dogs, especially if they're big dogs.
But little dogs?
I've, I've got a neighbor who, in my opinion, has the best arrangement for dogs. He has, he has three hunting dogs, and he has an acre, and he, he has a 15-foot fence strip all the way around his yard. He has his indoor yard and play, where the kids play. He has this, that full loop that they can run and exercise. You know, the saddest thing is to see a dog tied up on a chain on a little yard and just sat there all day long. Little, small lots, really, do not...
But if it's a little dog, like, my dog lays like a beached whale all day.
Is he an indoor dog or a dog?
Oh, yeah, she's an indoor dog.
You know, if I was having a dog, I would have an indoor dog, you know?
But like, that could have three of those dogs, they're only 10 pounds.
Where are you, where are you guys going with this?
I don't know, because I don't think we have a right, I don't think the government has a right to tell me what I can do in my house.
It's that three seems like a lot of dogs for a small lot, or for two of them want to be enough for, for, if you want.
Those are our main complaints. If we want to put maxes on them, let's put maxes, whatever.
Why are we going back around all this?
I don't know.
We had this done.
It's Groundhog Day 2.
Because penalize, penalize these guys.
Yeah.
Actually, what, what Nelson did was, you know, William was, was the one last, that was here at the meeting, and he, he talked to me, and he talked to, I think, several afterwards, that, you know, it doesn't seem fair with a large lot that you're limiting, or you're giving them the same, same amount as a small lot. That, that seems reasonable to me.
I agree.
I think bigger, you've got a big lot, you actually could handle more animals on that.
Which is, which is why the planning commission discounted it down to 80% on point value instead of 100%, because they've got bigger lots. So there's less, if I have an acre, and I've got my house on it, that leaves probably three-quarter of an acre or more open, if I've got a really big house, on that ground. But on that same acre, if I lived in Tricia's neighborhood, there'd be three, three homes on the same lot.
Four, potentially four.
Potentially four. You take the front end of the house, now you've got less open space to have the animals, right?
Okay, let's leave 10, whatever, 18A alone. We've already done that. Let's not rehash that. That's done. Let's just do B.
Yeah, B was what he was concerned with.
So B, we've gone in, retooled, you'll notice, actually...
But I'm wondering if we need to change the max. That's my big, that's my, that's my only complaint.
I, you know what, I say, let's, let's take it out, and...
But then what if someone does have 60 dogs?
Or what if you do, say, per acre?
Max, that's what we said. You said they could have 60 dogs, and I'm thinking, nope. Well, the county's like, it counts 60.
Well, they're, or they could have 24 cows. No, but there, there is still county code that addresses the maximum number of dogs you can have, right? Shay? Well, I mean, there is, I mean, you get over a certain point, you've got to have a count limit. It's not our requirement, it's the county and state.
And what is that number? What if we maxed it at that?
That's a really good question.
Max it at what?
Whatever the...
Whatever the count.
The county's is, before you have to get a kennel permit.
Eight, seven dogs, I think.
Seven?
Eight, seven.
So what if we just go with, like, what the county does? Because that seems more reasonable to me. I don't know. This is...
We've got...
Because if you have puppies, that's not counted, right?
Yeah, they're not counted.
Like, there's all that stuff.
You're given some time to let...
Yeah, you're given some time.
Once they're weaned from the parent, then you have to get rid of them, or cycle out some of your old ones.
No, we're going to get through this. We're going to be done. We got three more minutes, four more minutes, and we're done with this.
Yes, and I'll go along with that. 6:25, we're done with this, so get it out, so we can pick it up in council, council again.
So we can move on, and I'll figure out how many I'm going to go on.
Who feels that that's a good solution? Let's go with what the county recommends? No one?
Well, you know what, let's, let's ask Mr. Ram, because he's the only one that I'm aware of that even has close to that number of dogs, right?
I only have three.
You've, oh, you've only got three? I thought you were going to have like five or six or something.
Or 60.
Enough for a...
We have 60.
We'd like to have more.
Okay.
But seven's reasonable, if it were seven.
I mean, you guys under our...
It's four.
It's four?
It's four.
Yeah, most cities are two, it looks like.
But can be...
That's why I say, most cities are two, and we're talking 60.
Four dogs, four cats.
I'm not willing, four dogs, four cats?
Or four cats.
Four?
And you've got to have that year of your kennel license.
I mean, you guys, under our...
All right. Okay, three minutes. I'm moving on.
I mean, if you look at the old code versus the new code that we've put in, we are super generous. I mean, if you run a 7,000, 10,000, 12,000 acre lot, you could have two cats and two dogs, and that's it. Nothing else. And now you can have five cats, two dogs, 11 chickens, and 56 pigeons, and five ducks, and 11 pheasants or rabbits.
Listen, you know I agree with you, but I'm telling you, that's one of the complaints about this whole thing, is that people felt like we were taking their rights away.
No, they never had any rights to start with.
Well, we're not talking about 1018A. We're not talking about 1018A. We're only talking about B. And this was on 18A, right, Nelson?
Even if you look at the livestock, I mean, there, there had two cats and two dogs. That's, that's the maximum that they could have in the city to start with, even on livestock.
No, they could have more than two cats. They were allowed five.
There was a conditional use for cats, if you wanted to get this.
Well, so a conditional, what, a conditional use, right?
So should we bump it to four?
A conditional use, but not...
We got, we got like a minimum.
And dogs were two, cats, you could get a conditional use for six.
Up to six.
Right? I mean, I think it's crazy that we are like...
Whatever you decide, Nelson, I'll go with.
We are changing the code like so much to be so much more generous.
Should we go to four?
Right? We already have problems that we can't contain, and we're saying, we already have all these issues with trying to control the animals, and now we're like, making it way more generous.
So the reason for the four, or the opportunity for, the, the reason for the four dogs in other areas is because of the opportunity for a kennel.
Right?
And a kennel is a formal thing in most cities, in most kind of municipalities, that has certain rules, regulations, et cetera. We don't permit that in Elk Ridge.
We don't allow kennels?
We do not, under the current construct. There's a few reasons for that, right? Most kennels are, that, most kennels and other municipalities are there for commercial purposes, and we don't really drive that opportunity in Elk Ridge, and we could in the commercial areas we have.
Right.
So I just want to make that point, right? There's, the reason why there's fours, because there's an out for more.
Yeah, that's true. But if we don't offer that out, then...
We either offer the out, or we offer a kennel option, is what you're saying.
Why? We're a bedroom community, we're not a dog bringer's paradise.
No, but I mean...
I moved here to bring... Okay, what if we do three per acre? Is that too many? I don't know. I'm just throwing this out. Two per acre? Two per acre.
I don't know why we are being more generous than we were with the original code. The original code said two. I don't know why we're changing it.
Because we're taking conditional use off the end.
Yeah.
That's why.
But just like he said, there isn't another out, so that's kind of not fair. We're now not allowing that.
Because we've decided that we don't want to manage the, the process, because the attorney is telling us this, because attorneys have...
Hey, what about this? What was the max with conditional use? Six? They could get six dogs? Does anyone know?
It was only, cats were the only one that was listed.
Oh.
The, the reason that we were considering conditional use with the dogs was that we do have, in the current code, we do have a section on kennels, but it's not tied to anything, but it, but it is tied to commercial property. That is true, but it wasn't tied to anything specifically. But the current code said something about like animals, which was the statement that, that was the first thing that needed to be taken out, because now we have miniature goats and all kinds of like animals. And so, anyway, that's, that's been taken out of here to try to, to try to clarify that. So...
Hey, I have an idea. What if we said...
Move on.
Okay, yeah. Here's, here would be my suggestion. What if we say, three per acre with a maximum of six dogs or six cats? Is that reasonable? I'm just throwing that out.
I'm not getting any heartburn, no matter what happens. It's like I said earlier, we could do nothing, and I'm okay with it, because I still have my rights. The only ones that are affected by it, the code changer, those with the smaller lots. I mean, let's, let's be real about it.
Okay. Well, whoever makes the motion, make whatever you want. That, I just threw that out there. Okay, let's move on, right?
Move on. Let's go back now, discuss the urban wildlife and the interface boundary issue. And Seth's here to present. We've got, okay, so, I've been thinking about this, I think we have four options, right? And we have max for two, right? Options. The options additional to those two, or to be more, obviously, but it's, don't do anything, we already have a boundary. Or two, just take all of the city out. That would probably won't fly through the, through the state forestry.
Yeah.
They're going to look at that and probably throw that one back. So I think that, if you consider what we have, I think that would probably be thrown back at us too from the state forestry departments as well. So, I think that realistically, we, we need to, to look at these two options that we put together seriously, and, and probably pick one of these two. So Shay, if you want to present those two, two options.
Okay, I think, I think what I'll do is, is, I'll just mention to you, in talking with the Division of Forestry further on this, Woodland Hills has put their whole city under this boundary. Payson City has not signed any cooperative agreements and has not declared an official boundary. So, we have no idea what they're, well, technically, they don't have a, a boundary declared, so...
So when you say all of Woodland Hills, are we talking like, all the way to where they butt up to Salem, Open Fields?
Well, they're telling, what the Division of Forestry is telling me is that everything inside their city boundary is, so...
But I, I just, I just wanted to.
If that city boundary goes down to Salem Hills, or, or it goes down to Salem and butts up, or, I don't know if there's, I know there's some county parcels in there, but I don't know if they go the full way across, but everything that's in the existing city boundary is.
What about Salem? Salem probably don't have anything, they probably don't, I don't know why they would consider anything.
I don't know about Salem. Yeah, they're kind of.
They're kind of ruled by the.
But if we throw it all out.
They're bounded by other cities that belong these.
Yeah, that's true.
Right?
Even their east bench up against the mountains.
So.
Their east bench up against the foothills?
Yeah.
But they have a boundary there?
So, anyway, keep going.
So, so anyway, I thought maybe the way to start with this is to let Seth describe that we've got the full boundary, this, this should match what you, what you have in your letter. And, and let Seth just talk about some of the issues that were that, you know, he, he sees as, as he's looking at this and, and why we should have a full boundary and then, and then I pull the other one up and we can kinda have a discussion on maybe what the differences are and, and why those differences.
Okay, have you all seen the memo that I put forward as a recommendation?
Yeah.
Okay. Basically, I just covered the city boundaries and then through the additional, I think, B, C, D, and E, I covered the, the areas and gave reasons for why. I started the boundary on the north end of the city on Hundred and Twelve and Lofer Canyon Road. And when around there, we, we can see obviously from the north, we've got a lot of open space. And a lot of that actually ties back to the Lofer Canyon drainage, which is all wild land all up through there. And if anything were to get even closer to that, we could have something that could move up the hill, so this is all this, but it's all possibility and it's real possibilities. Now, to the west of that area, we're talking orchards, we're talking some open farmlands, stuff like that as well. And when you look at the Utah two thousand six Urban Wildlife Interface Code, it talks about you don't wanna have anything spread from your city to surrounding areas, and you don't wanna have surrounding area fires spread into your city, you're trying to mitigate that. And so, with that, with those open fields and then into orchards, something could potentially happen to go across those areas and then we, a fire could, it could start inside the city, could be outside the boundaries of the city in just a matter of minutes. Now, on the west side, coming up what used to be Elk Ridge Drive, now golden away is where we made the changes in the roads, and then up to Goose Nest. The area of Goose Nest, west of the city buil, or the parks, the parks, or excuse me, the Public Works Building, that is all not even under fire hydrants. So that, that is area right there, if, if a house were to catch on fire down that way because of no fire hydrants and anything to mitigate that, it could potentially go up, we've had fires down there in the past, I think twenty years ago, we lost a roof off of a house down the very end of Goose Nest Drive. That could, that could very easily spread into wildland area from there, into orchards and, because we can't get down there, we can't put enough water on a fire to completely douse the thing. We're doing the best we can, but it's location, and it's gonna take a while for us to get hydrants down to that area, so that's one of the mitigating factors there as well. Any new construction down in that area would help us by requiring sprinklers or requiring other mitigating options that could minimize the spread of, of fire from a structure to wildland area. On the, and further up the, the west, same thing, we're actually bordering on the golf course, but we've also got areas with inside the city, and I refer to that as the water tank drainage. We have kind of a big gully that runs right through the middle of the city, that is currently only about twenty-five percent developed. And there's a lot of open space in there, something could spread inside the city and up through that and then into wildland area very quickly. We had a fire in two thousand three at the very top of that, which we had to call in there, ill tanker to put it out. It got about twenty acres before we actually got to put out and restarted the fireworks. So that is very real, we've had fires there already. Working around on the south boundary, we're obviously bordering wildland, we're bordering, we're bordering Payson, we're bordering state lands, that's all wild area. I mean, that's, that's an obvious one for me. Into Lofer Canyon, again, wildland area, we're, we're affecting, if we were to burn that off, we're affecting drainage directly off of, off of Lofer Mountain, which we've all seen what happens when we burn off watershed. It doesn't go very well the next spring. So, anything we do on that side of the city would just help us to maintain what's already there and to try to minimize any effects of anything getting outside the city. So that's basically circling the city and what my thoughts are with why each area. Any, any questions?
So up that, up those, up in those cabin areas up there.
Which is above the city limit.
Which is outside the city, right, is that in the counties? Do you remember?
It's in our city limits.
Is it in the city, is it in the county?
Lofer Recreation Association within our city limits.
Yep.
Well, the only, the only problem trying to enforce anything up there is good luck.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I know we have the responsibility to respond up there, but I know it's a gated community, very minimal building up there and things been up there for a long time, so.
Okay. So that's option one, which is basically the, the entire city, right? Did that, did that option cover the the, the development below eleven two hundred?
Correct.
It only covers down to the city boundaries, that's all.
Yeah, it goes down to the.
Oh, yeah.
The, 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 the channel space one and the.
Oh, there's space one, okay.
Alright, yeah, okay.
So. So let me ask you this for a little Shay, we've got the area down there on the north end, you got that little section that's in Salem? I mean, if we put this in place, can we then not go to Salem and say, this is where our boundaries, we feel that there's a hazard here? If they were to put together a map, maybe above the canal, where they would treat firework restrictions and other things maybe the same way we would, because.
That's, that's easily negotiated.
I mean, if we've got a map and we're saying this is a big enough issue, we're.
You wouldn't ask them to create a boundary for wild, wildland urban interface, but with these, um, armonization with fireworks and those kinds of things.
The other thing is also Payson on the west side and on Park South.
I got a plan with Payson, so, I'll, I'll bring that up later.
And I think with us taking, with us taking initiative on this, it gives those cities an option to let maybe look at that and maybe they need to do something about that to, to minimize risks to that area and to maintain the environment in those particular locations.
Okay, so now we have option, we, we've taken option number two, or option zero, I don't know how he's numbered them.
Well, it's, it's option two right now.
Okay, good.
Yeah, it's option two.
So I, I guess, I guess, before we jump into this, just to give you a little background, after, after our meeting with the Division of Forestry, the state fire marshal came down and visited with the city a couple days later, sometime that week, and looked through this. And he was looking at it and his suggestion was that, you have a, you have the.
Uh, might be in that, go right here.
His, his suggestion was, basically, he looked at it and he says, yeah, your, your Lofer Canyon is, is an obvious
Yeah, for sure.
An obvious corridor that, that needs to be protected and also this, the area down here through the water tanks from the senior housing on up there is, is obvious, and so his suggestion was basically to come across Park Drive and then come down around you know, roughly Rocky Mountain Way and, and cover this portion of the city with, in this boundary. So we kinda looked at that and thought about that and, and as we were talking about it, the, the big issue that came up in this discussion was the fact that Goose Nest areas on their own water systems, we have no control of the water system, they don't have fire hydrants, their, their water service.
They have.
They, you know, they'd have to put in tanks and pumps in the houses to even, to even guarantee the sprinkler system would work in the house. Which is, I mean, that's standard, people do that all the time up in the, you know, up in mountainous areas where they don't have water service, they'll put like a little five hundred gallon tank, about the size of a, a large closet somewhere in the house and a, a pump on it to run that, and then somehow you gotta have alternate power to that, obviously, because.
Could you get a cup of power?
Exactly, so.
So that state, the state regs, one of the things that that included was an area that doesn't have five hundred, it has to be, you know.
Yeah, correct, so, so in looking at that, basically, we looked at it as, well, let's just draw a line across Goose Nest. So, so as we look at this area that's been left out, well, well, why, why is it? Why, why would we leave this area out? First of all, it pretty much already meets the requirements. We're, we're about seventy-five percent built out down there, and, and everything that's gone in up to this point has sprinklers. And, and when we look at the checklist that's at the back of the, of the state code, so there's a, there's thresholds, so anything under fifty points, you don't have to do anything. Anything between fifty and seventy-five points is considered moderate, seventy-five to a hundred is, is high risk. A hundred plus is, is extremely high risk. And then that puts you in different categories with, with how you build, but, but the reality of what that, of what that's doing when you go through that checkpoint, that checklist is, the reason those people are down below fifty is because they've already met the fire safe requirements. That's why they're there flat out, and so, and as I went through two or three options, just hypothetical options around town, and it, and looked at this, I couldn't get, I, I was below fifty down here, just with, with the roads, fire, the fact we've got sprinkler system, right now, we've got pretty good defensible space around the homes, we don't have the big trees and that up around those homes.
So would that mean if we pass this, they don't have to put sprinklers in all the newer homes going in now?
Correct, correct, they wouldn't in that, in that area.
If we let, if we let that work the way it is.
Their house catches fire. Yeah, I just.
But, but the issue becomes.
And I had to put them in, they put them in, I'm just kidding.
Remember, we, we have the school there, they'll have, they'll be sprinklers there anyways, the school version of authority. So that's not gonna be a problem. And what's, what is on the, the west side there?
They've got the story orchard.
I know, we've got an orchard.
We didn't name some orchards, which are.
And all that, that field is so dry right now.
But you got Haskellville, the big one, right?
No, right below me, like right below the park, is, you ask them, is dry as a bone.
Well, I was gonna say, and we have some big dry open fields right in the middle currently.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like that could go.
Yeah.
We have our own weed patches. We got new rooms.
You know, maybe when the, when it's fully developed and the school's in and everything's.
But we'll still have a lot of that open area.
But, but I wanna.
I put that in the memo, if you look at that memo, I, I recommend options to re, to relook at this periodically, based upon that very fact.
Well, and even the, the state law requires you go look at it every two years.
Okay.
And, and ask those questions and just accordingly, but I think, as I, as I look at this, I mean, obviously, the, the fire sprinklers inside the homes is a, is an important issue. And it, and it's one that people outside of Elk Ridge can't understand, I, you know, especially if they come from large communities where they've got full-time fire departments and that, they, they don't understand it. And that's where we're getting the pushback. And we're getting pushback from people who don't understand that. But the second, the second biggest issue has gotta be the providing defen, defensive space around the homes.
Correct.
And, and so, and I mean, I'm just gonna hand you this, and I'm not gonna go through it tonight, but if you, if you want some interesting reading, at, at some point in time, this is, these are, this is the study that's been done by the Insurance Institute, where they actually went in and created a, a wind tunnel, put a big old turntable and built a home on it, and then created different fire situations and to try to replicate these wildland fire situations. And sometime if you wanna read that, it'd kinda give you an idea, this was done in two thousand twelve, of where some of these requirements come from, and they, and basically, you know, this just backed up some of the.
Can we look at those two?
Sure, we've got some here.
So I think what you're, what you have here is a great document that probably was put into practice in Uinta this last summer. When that town got, had that fire in there, right, they were situated much like we are.
Yeah, and, and, and it was interesting because looking through this and especially reading through that study there a little bit. It was interesting to me that I could see those exact same issues that occurred there. I mean, in, in this study, they, they have fireproofs, you know, they've got the asphalt shingles on the house, but then they put leaves and debris on top of that. And then all of a sudden, they're, they're blowing they're blowing embers across it, those leaves and debris catch, they go, they go right up, you know, they follow right up the leaves and debris and find a portion of the house, in this case, it was a dormer. Maybe it might go up to the side of a, of something. It's totally flammable and it starts to burn. You know, all off one spark into, into leaves and debris, and so.
Well, to me, it just seems, I, I'm just gonna throw this out there. He, here's the guy that, you know what I mean, knows what he's talking about the most. If Seth says we do the whole thing, we do the whole thing. Like, and it makes more sense, cause then you just have a uniform code and you're not, well, hold on, let me look.
That's the way I don't think you do the whole city, then you don't have it.
Yeah, so, so, so did, I guess where I'm going with this is it, it's more than just looking at the boundary. It's, it's considering this whole code, and if we, if we, we really need to approve the code at the same time that we approve the, the boundary change, and, and some of the, some of the thoughts are with this. Obviously, we've got the older part of town that's, you've got this area that's pretty much built out. We've got a lot of big trees, this is, this is probably the area where we've got lots of homes that don't have defensible space, we've got pine trees right next to the house, you know, rubbing on it.
I've got sprinklers in my own brush to try to, to try to help a little bit.
Exactly, and so. And so obviously, we apply this code, but these guys have already built, their, their landscaping is mature, so the best we can do with them is to educate. And, and as I was talking to the mayor about this and saying, okay, well, how, how do we enforce these requirements? And the, the thought was, was that we could come up with some sort of a pamphlet that we would give to all the basically to every resident, and as new residents come in, we'll also give them a pamphlet and then maybe on a yearly basis, and the Division of Forestry would be more than happy to come down and help with this, they, you have some sort of a might even be tied with your city celebration, just some sort of a booth or some, somewhere to be able to educate people about this and, and talk specifically about these issues. It was best.
So rather than enforce something, we would entice and encourage, right?
Well, and in, and in the new, you know, the, the new development, we're able to we're able to start off on the right foot, but then, but then we can go after, as, as they talked about, there's, there's grants out there so you can, you can have people, you can help people go in and clean the, the underbrush out and, you know, remove some of that fuel and, and deal with some of those issues. There's, there's a lot of directions we could take this, but it, but it's important that we, we have the, the comprehensive code there and, and what I love about this state code is I really love that. The more I've gone through this, I really love that checklist and the point system that's tied to it, because it lets somebody who's designing their home and building their home determine which things are more important to them. Are they gonna, where are they gonna put their money in, into the house to, to meet those points? And, and they're making conscious decisions by, by doing that, but in the end, the product that, that we get on the city side is something that is more defensible or, you know, is, is less likely to, to burn.
When you ran, you ran some hypothetical numbers I threw out, do you ever get into the extremes, I mean, not so I, don't consider, don't consider the, the south side of town where it's not built out?
Well, I, I actually looked at, where's that gentleman that lives, there's somebody who lives right up in here that's, that's outside. I, I actually, you know, just looking on Google Earth, what he has there and just.
The acres.
Acres up there?
Okay, so they, they are an extreme.
Yeah, they are, that's, okay, I'll buy that, right?
Their numbers are off the chart.
They don't have a road, they don't have sprinklers, they have.
And that's the point, when, when you start to sit down and look at it, we, we require.
They probably have shake shingles.
We, you know, are, we, we require fire hydrants and, and our water system is set up to fifteen hundred gallons per minute, so we've got adequate fire flow throughout all the new subdivisions, well, and even in the old part of town, we've, and we require paved roads, we, we limit distances on driveways and if they have a longer driveway, we, I require them to bring in fire hydrants or, or do other things, make sure that the fire equipment can get up there to the house. And so, we've already, just doing those things, we've already basically brought most of the houses down to at least height. Just, just in those steps alone, and, and in most cases, just those steps alone brought them down to moderate, it just depends on where they're at in proximity. But there's some interesting things that, that you'll kind of glean out of this, and, and there's certain zones, and if, if you're if you've got a clear area of thirty feet between your home and something that's burning, it, it takes about that much distance, if you get any much closer than that, the heat from whatever's burning will actually start wood, vinyl sightings, will start combustible things to spontaneously combust just off the heat. It'll break windows, it'll break the glass in the windows if it's, if it's that close for a few minutes, and so they have that, that zone, keeping it out of that thirty feet, then they have it another zone that's a hundred to two hundred feet, that's really the ember spread.
And embers can go for miles.
They, they can, but, but they're looking at it as, this is the, this, this catches eighty percent or ninety percent of the embers or something like that. They, they can, but, but they're looking at it as, this is the, this, this catches eighty percent or ninety percent of the embers or something like that. We can catch most of those. But think about it for a minute, two hundred feet around any one of these houses, you're not even on their own property. You're, you're on other people's property, so-
You really can't.
Exactly, with the setbacks the way they are, you're, you're dealing with somebody else's property. So really, your neighbors and what they do on their property affects you greatly when it comes to, to this whole-
Well, and, and I think, you know, that was my thought on that north end of town where the homes are closer. There's an even bigger dam, bigger potential problem there. If one of those cats is fired, because they're so close to the neighboring houses, they will just start, start on fire. If one of them catches on fire and flames, get outside. The other thing too, you know, we, and lastly, they reference what Woodland Hills is doing to help. I mean, it's one thing to give people a brochure or whatever, but if we do something as a city that's proactive, that will make it easier or facilitate dealing with some of this defensible space and provide a means or a way to do that, probably through grants, or we get a chipper, we do something like that, where we, we provide a way for people to do it. I think there are a lot of people that would do it.
Yeah.
If they didn't have to drive clear to West Mountain to get rid of one truckload of limbs, so to speak. I mean, I took thirteen loads of limbs this spring, clearing my brush, and I could still do probably another five percent.
Yeah, I know, I, I mean-
You have a chipper.
Okay, so, 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 so tell me how, so we gotta move on to another item, but tell me how you feel about, are you, are you comfortable with an option one or an option two, or are you wanting to build your own?
Option one.
I like option one.
I like option one.
I do.
Which is the city?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I don't want someone's house catching on fire, 'cause they don't have sprinklers, and it's burning mine down, when I put sprinklers in mine, 'cause I'm not gonna burn their house down.
I think we still have too much open space and they've opened fields down there to not include that part of the city at this point in time.
So the plan here then, we, we have a, two weeks of noodle, right? You can still think through this, because we'll bring forward a-
We'll bring forward a code amendment.
A code amendment, we'll have a public hearing for. In fact, I think, do you publish that, public hearing yet?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, that'll go out. So next time we meet, we'll have a public hearing on the code, and then in the council meeting, we'll both adopt the code and the, the boundary.
Yeah, no, and I think our fire chief recommends, you know, the whole city and the forestry division, when they were here, recommended the entire city. So, fire chief, forestry division, and our knowledge of our own city and the, the property and open space and issues, you know?
All right, great, great discussion. Let's, let me-
Is it okay, basison?
Yeah, go ahead, make it quick, we're moving on.
Sure, each sprinkler system in each home costs about five or six thousand dollars. I think long as most people don't know that, I think most people will continue to be for it. And all your information was awesome, so thank you.
Okay, great. Paul, someone, someone, real quick.
About fifteen minutes, and they approved to sell it, they've got a, they're in the process of getting a realtor to sell it.
Was it unanimous?
Yes.
Yeah, I imagine it would be. I think everybody wanted to get rid of it.
It was unanimous to get rid of it.
Okay, okay, great. I just wanna fill you in on the, on the Pason meetings, what we had with them regarding, the water, where they, where we wanted to get with them. We'd called, we'd called Dave Duckett and said, hey, you know, we just wanna make sure, you know, we're not pushing this, this change, right? So they wanted, we wanted together and just to make sure that everything was laid out on the table, right?
What changed?
Over by the golf course.
Oh, how they're, me, me.
Right, and we weren't, we weren't asking the residents to go and get a boundary change.
No, he's trying to do it all on his own.
He's doing it all, but I told Dave, we just wanna make sure that Dave knew that we weren't indicating anything, right? But in that discussion, we, we kinda basically got to a status quo where we are. We're not providing water to them, we're not looking at, we don't, we don't really even want a boundary change necessarily there. It's not something we're going after, right? So, yeah, so then I got thinking, all right, here's what I got thinking. Why, why are we so hung up on providing water to those residents? Because Pason's willing to divert some of their water from their well to our well, so, so it wouldn't go against our acreage feat that we, we were allowed to pump. The nine, the well that they're gonna build off of, right, in a few years, is in the exact same aquifer that our well is in. They go dry, we go dry, we go dry, they go dry.
Yeah.
You gonna stop them from building? You're not gonna stop these folks from building over there.
No, but I don't think it's fair that they're gonna use all of our roads and everything like that.
That's the difference, you don't get in the road yet, stick with water, 'cause we deal with each one separately.
I know, but-
So that's news to me that Pason wants to allow water from their well to come into our well to-
No, 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 no. Divert is for the water-
Their water rights are assigned to that point.
Right, so they can pump less and we can pump more.
So wait, so do-
So not to, not to tie the two together, I would never let them-
I was, I was like-
In fact, we talked about that, and we-
And they're, they're exploring that option with some other cities.
I think, I think it's pertinent to note too, that they are madly, I shouldn't say madly, but they're, they are very actively, I, in the middle of moving water into that well, they're changing point of diversions. I've been getting, I think they've got two or three applications out right now.
To move that water?
To move water into that well.
So, we can protest that, right?
We can.
Yeah.
I mean, we can. You know, when, when the residents protested us drilling our well and moving, and doing what we're doing,
It's obligatory for us to protest, right?
You know, I, I, I think that it's bad for us, it'd be bad faith and bad form for us to not protest that when we just got done going and jumping through all these hoops with all the other people all around our community. I think it would show them that we feel the same way about their water as they do, and vice versa, even though it's the same aquifer.
I don't know what to say about that.
Why is, the thing is, the protest protects you in the future if something is to happen. If you don't protest and they draw more water from their well and it decreases the amount you can get from yours, you are protected. If you do not protest, you lose that right to bring that claim and to have compensation.
The cost, what, what is it costing us to drill this new well? We take, we have to drill a new well and renew infrastructure, pay you-
Where are they at on that? That's all-
There's, there's, yeah, and they, and these are small blocks that they're, right now, that they're moving over, but, but it's interesting that they're starting to move that over. I, I think you're-
Are they gonna feed the north end of their, north end of their town, you know, with this tank up here? How are they gonna provide water on the north side, girls, down there? Where's the tanks at?
I, I think they would, I think they would have to. I think that was, in, in my mind, as I look at this, what's, what's really gonna force this whole issue is when Haskell-
Builds his seventy-five ounces or whatever, right?
When all that acreage opens up, they've got to serve it somehow, which is gonna force them to build a tank-
Yes, it will.
Or have him build them a tank.
Yep.
And it, and they'll start using that. And at that point, like you said, it's, it'll, it'll stay on this east side and, and all the way north is,
Yep.
From what I can see.
I suspect that that, that well's in exactly the same aquifer we're in. They're about nine hundred feet, we're about eight hundred and, eight hundred feet, right? Some in that zone, so you know we're pumping the same water. So, so I, I'm not, I'm not necessarily trying to be a proponent, but I'm like, we need to make sure that we, we deal with the issues at hand that make sense. Right? And I was hoping to protect our water supply. But if they're pumping water out of their well and we don't have anything to say about it, which we wouldn't if, if the state lets them do it, right? They go dry, we go dry, we go dry, they go dry.
Well, I, I, I don't know that your protect, your protest does a lot right now. The protest would've done a lot when the well initially went in. Because just like with us, our, our, we, well, we've, we've taken a step slightly different than them. We, we went for the change application to divert water.
Yep.
And, and the well. They chose to do the well first and then divert water over, so they did it slightly different. But the, the point is, is they were allowed to drill the well, and, and so from the, in state's eyes, they're allowed to pull whatever water that they agreed upon with that initial, in that initial application. That's when the, that's when the protest would've made, made a, a difference. At, at this point, protesting a, a small amount moving from one place to another,
Were they authorized to?
It's, it's going to go through no matter what, because they've already-
Have they already, that's what, they're not upping the amount that they're pumping above what they previously had.
They can't.
No, they're just diverting, they're diverting water in, is, is what they're doing, they're just moving their rights over into it.
But they've probably been approved for so many acre feet.
Yep.
Yeah, exactly.
There's the funny thing about council, city councils, like, wish that would've been done, but we weren't here when it happened, so.
No, we weren't.
None of us knew when that, and I'm, I'm still baffled by that.
And it's not just us, it's all the people protesting, ours didn't know about it.
Oh.
Yeah, that's what's weird.
Until we found out they hit water, and that's when we found out.
Where is this well, when was the drill?
You know, a couple of years ago, over on the golf course.
All for Pason City.
Yep.
Why is Pason City so?
They're, they're staking claim to the water that they-
But like, why, why do they want to give us the, or whatever, have us sell water to them or give us whatever they wanna do?
You are not gonna stop those people from building.
No, we're not.
Right?
But why, that, that is not Pason. They're, oh, in the night, if they think it is.
It is, 'cause it's annexed into their city.
I know, but no one here really thinks of that as-
But it is in Pason.
Yep.
But why can't Pason let that go, like that, okay, the Haskell thing, I get that, I get them not leaving us to annex that in, that makes sense to me.
That's up to the landowners to fight that battle with Pason if they want, that's, it's up to them.
No, I know, but why is Pason, why is he coming to you and trying to say, well, why don't you, why won't you do this?
Well, they want us to, they would like to let them build, they're gonna build without them having a well and a property and septic tank.
Yeah.
Right, which I'm really not thrilled about, right? And for, until they have the tank up there, they'd like us to supply the water.
I think people are gonna be pretty ticked if they find out-
I just wanna make sure you realize that you're not saving our water source.
No, I know we're not, I know we're not.
In the discussion, right?
At the end of the day, our new well is online, connected, we've got the water.
But it's the principle of it to me.
I just wanna make sure that you do understand that we have to make sure that we focus on the issue that's applicable to the situation.
Well, whether we provide the water or whether they provide the water, it's all coming out of the same aquifer, right?
Yep, that would be, I mean, now I'm no hydrologist or anything, right, or a geotechnical-
It's, it's, seems like a pretty safe-
Pretty safe, they're the same business, right? We're only, what, a mile probably from each other?
Okay, but it goes dry and they find out we were selling water to Pason homes, how tipped are, but they're not, that's right. I'm just saying, people are gonna be like, you were what with our water?
Well, and, and that's what, I agree, I mean, if it's coming out the same aquifer either way, let them provide for their own residents and we'll provide for ours.
That's where we stand. So, I, 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 I said-
We do not wanna start selling water.
I, that's kinda where we left it, so I just wanna make sure that I've done my due diligence in analyzing the situation as best as we can. All right, we're gonna go one more, one more little bit, 'cause I just wanna introduce the dark sky ordinance. And if you look at that, let me tell you, let me tell you where it is. First of all, it's the worst formatted ordinance we have ever seen, and so I'm perfectly fine with, with that. My intention was more to draft it based on a model ordinance that the, that the lighting institute has basically come up with. So I pulled out the salient parts that apply to our city, they have a whole bunch of other stuff that doesn't apply to our city, and, and basically put it into this document, and-
I mean, did this document make sense to anybody?
My, where does it make sense?
Everywhere, I'm like, what is this, okay, A, B?
These are the zones, so they're-
Okay, but how do we know what zones we haven't gotten?
I haven't got the override, that wasn't part of this.
Okay.
Right? But what I wanna make sure that, that you understand is that it's not about eliminating, eliminating lighting for safety or anything like that. It's about proper lighting and the best use of the lighting, right?
Sure.
And yet protecting residents from light trespass and skyglow and all the other junk that comes from irresponsible lighting. So, I, I put this together, I wanted to kinda test the water a little bit, because what needs to happen is it really needs to go to Shay, and Shay needs to do his magic to put it together in a, an ordinance that would make sense, that's readable, right? And then draft it and go through the planning commission process with, with all that good stuff, right? But, and a lot of the confusion came from what's a, you know, the lumen table and those kind of things.
Yeah.
And you can put wattage equivalency in there, right? You know, incandescent wattage equivalents and those kind of things, but you can't just put a, you know, the, the more official way to do it is based on the lumens, which is a measure of the light output.
Okay.
Right? So you can, you can put tables in there, say like, six hundred and thirty's equivalent to a sixty watt light bulb, incandescent sixty watt light bulb kind of thing. So that it's, so you don't have to get into all of the-
I, I think it's a great idea, as long as we're not, 'cause I wanna leave my lights on at night.
So, you can, you can, as long as they conform to the dark sky lighting, they're shielded.
Like they face down or?
Yes.
Okay.
So basically, the idea is keep your light under control.
But on here, it says they have-
Yeah.
No, but, okay, so, but it says right here, you have to twenty twenty-five to be compliant.
Well, so, so I did spend about five minutes in that section.
Uh-huh.
I didn't spend more than five minutes in that section.
I just, when I read through it, I read that, and it was like, okay, on or before. But like, they would, we would have time to get, 'cause like, my lights right now would not be compliant, but I'm not opposed to this.
No, you would have, in this case, ten years to comply to the ordinance.
Can I ask a question on that?
But what we're trying to get to is, I think we have to stem the tide, right, especially as we go south, because we'll lose this, right? And secondly, I think, I think that there are, um, well, I, I don't want to, if you read it, there's more requirements on the commercial side.
Yeah, and from the city, and on the city side, I think that homeowners-
And the city, then really on the-
That's what I felt like it should be.
Basically, all the residences, you need to have directed lighting. That's really, that's really what we're about.
I agree, because people that built below me, I can't, it's just-
So-
But what's going on, like then, is it, is it the lights in the office?
I live on the ridge of the hill.
Hang on, hold it, this is not a discussion for public discussion, so we gotta get to the council meeting. If you're willing, can we, would you be, would you be willing to send this to Shay and have him work on this? 'Cause I don't wanna send him to do something and have the council. Well, I- If you don't do this, we take it out of the general plan.
I, I think that it needs to be addressed. I mean, let's, let's be practical about it, the north end of town is almost built out.
Right.
It's the south end where we're gonna, where this is gonna get away from us. We're gonna have the homes you'll be able to see from Point of the Mountain if we don't.
Yep.
Well, you know, you can already see those golf course lights from the point of the mountain.
Yes, yes, and that's, that's a separate, separate discussion. But I think that if we put something in place, and we've got Lee Haskell's commercial development that's coming forward, if we don't start with getting something figured out,
Right.
we're gonna be stuck with whatever happens there.
Right. Parking lot lights and everything, it could be disaster, I think.
When, when they started building the homes in Salem, just outside of Elk Ridge, down there on the other side of one hundred twelve south, I think everybody that lived in Elk Ridge contacted me and said, can you get the city to turn off the lights? And I said, well, that's not Elk Ridge.
Oh, the big bright ones that would say, okay.
Yeah, the big bright ones, you know, because they have different lighting standards than we have. And we don't have streetlights, because we don't have the ability or the function to even pay the bills for, to have those extra lights on all over town.
So are you okay with this? Yeah, I wanna do a lot of discussion on it. Can we get Shay, Shay, will you work this and get through on planning commission and go put together something?
Okay, but I, I have a quick question. So, if we go and do all this, say like, everyone's mad, they don't wanna change their, their front lights, then we can't become dark sky, right?
Yes, you can.
We have, oh, you can?
Well, what do you mean by the, the-
Like, to be listed on the registry and all that?
Yes, you can.
Oh, we can?
Absolutely.
Okay, 'cause I think if there's a little wiggle room with some of that, like the personal aspect of it,
This is also the law, this is the model ordinance, that they also, with the time to, to figure out how you get the rest of the city in-
No, I think this is exactly what the city needs, this is why people moved up here, is so we can see the sky and have that.
Okay, let's go on. All right, let's go ahead and begin our regular city council meeting agenda, or meeting for the September twenty-sixth. Um, I have a, I've already had a volunteer, Paul Crick, will, will give us an opening of prayer. And Jared, will you give us a pledge with the, afterward? Yeah. Jared Peterson.
I don't pray.
All right.
Our Father in heaven, we're grateful that we could meet here as concerned citizens, citizens of Elk Ridge. May I ask that, as we discuss those things pertinent to this city, that we- as we discuss those things pertinent to this city, that we'll be able to do so in a civil manner, and say this nameless on Jesus Christ.
Please repeat the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We need to have an adjustment on the timeframe and approval of the agenda. Somebody wanna make a motion to that?
I'll make a motion that we approve the start time at seven ten P M. for a regular city council meeting. And approve the agenda, yes.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed?
I have.
Passes. Thank you. Let's do a roll call. Dale Pigler.
Britton Thompson.
Nelson Abbott.
Ty Ellis.
Trish Thomas.
Paul Crook.
Great. All right, we have a few minutes for public forum. If you've signed your name up over there, you're more than happy to hear you, and try to keep coming to just a couple of minutes, and inform of a statement if you would, please.
The first one's Daniel Meredith.
Daniel. You're up.
Uh, it is about the dark sky, so, um, I won't tear this apart, 'cause I realize it was just a, a, um, a temporary draft, but on it, when you, when you do revise it, um, you do have the clause that says, you know, any existing, too many existing lighting is exempt, and then later it revokes it, so, ten A, eight dash nine revokes it, so. It does say you have until twenty twenty-five, but then what happens is subsection B says, upper part of it says, if you don't comply, then you have to shut off your lights.
Okay.
So, just as it has a momentary. Uh, the notes, though, I have on it, uh, so the first is, you know, we wanna do, kinda be a little careful as far as the city not to micromanage, you know, you've got cities like Sandy, and things that, you know, dictate, you know, brick, stucco, type of trees, style of grass, things like that, so. Try not to get too, you know, when you're writing this, you know, it is a small community anyway. Uh, second part is, you know, enforcement, of course, you mentioned that just a little bit ago, you know, it's real hard enforcing existing codes like fences, things like that, so. Enforcing this would be a logistical nightmare when you're talking thousands of homes, businesses, easy on business, because it's business citations, they listen. Residential, you're gonna really run into a lot of problems, so kinda take that into consideration as well. Uh, I did wanna mention, too, I was looking at several case law, um, lights that shine, that are nuisance, do fall under the state nuisance laws, and they're very easily punishable. So, if it is just about neighbors' lights shining, there are specific lumen restrictions, direction restrictions, if you can see, the bare gold will assert it out. Lumens are measured for distance, too, so just so you know when you're doing that, you can say six hundred lumens, but you don't have to register six hundred lumens. Oh, it doesn't nervous. Six hundred lumens at eight feet, that means four hundred at twelve feet, and so forth, dissipates. So, if that's a standing issue, or if that comes up as part of the debate, that's already illegal. It's not part of the dark sky. And then, I don't recall if it was in here, but it was saying something about the curfew set by there, I think it should be part of the council or permanently in the code. So, it's not so subjective in here, it was, you know, the, it was very subjective on when it could be set and when it could be changed. I think if there's gonna be a set curfew, X amount, you know, ten o'clock, whatever it's gonna be, I think it needs to be permanent, set by the council in the code, so that's just my points on that side.
Thanks, Daniel, appreciate it. All right, who's next?
Uh, Paul Palmer. So, are there any homes currently that don't comply?
With this?
With the dark sky.
Oh, yeah, almost every one of them. If you've got open light bulbs on your garage.
What do you mean, open light bulbs?
Light bulbs are maybe above a hundred, above the horizontal line. So.
So, what if they point downward?
So, if you took that picture right there, flipped it around upside down, and it was dark, and the light would only go down, then it would be compliant.
But that picture turned upside down wouldn't be.
Yeah, because the light.
Okay, so I don't have a lot to touch, state your, state your, state your comment, it's a statement, and we're moving on. You can ask questions to us afterwards and figure stuff out there.
Okay.
Not gonna do Q and A.
So, almost every home is not compliant, you said? So, why are we allowing the builders to put in?
No questions. Let's ask, let's do this. Just state your statement, and we're moving on.
Okay, um. Then we need to change that immediately with the builders, but I think what's in is, it's already there, it's there, it's too late. That's my statement.
Okay. All right, Royce, who's next?
Jared Peterson.
Jared Peterson.
I have three things. Hopefully, everybody saw my email on the animal code.
We did.
Yep.
I wasn't here.
We're gonna have a little discussion on that, still coming, so.
Second, um, the one inch overlay that went down, around, around, about, down, is the worst, worst overlay I've ever, ever seen. I'll just say that. And then, third, I didn't know if the city had any input on the intersection of Upridge Drive and the Canal Road. I witnessed another wreck where people going east-west, I mean, it was Virginia, crack, quacking, bush got nailed, and turned around right in front of me. And that's like the eighth wreck I've actually come upon down there, so I didn't know if the city had.
Is this eleven two hundred?
No.
No.
It's Upridge Drive and Salem, I think it's considered county, I don't know.
Yeah.
I know they got blinking lights on the stop sign, I don't know if Rumble Street.
Okay.
Anyways, I didn't know if there could be any.
Royce, did you know that? Did we know that?
About the accident?
Yeah.
That's like the eighth one I've seen in the last ten years.
You can't see if you're coming from there.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it, two or three things.
Who's next?
Sean Grant.
Sean.
So, um, I wanted to address just the animal code, and particularly the issue that seems to continue to be lingering around the dog issue. And I know it applies, the discussions that you have, it applies to cats as well. And I witnessed the, the video, I didn't witness, I watched the video of the last city council, and the concerns that were brought up around smaller homes having dogs, in the spirit of, um, being inhumane to dogs, as well as causing nuisance to others. As some of you know, we moved here, um, about, about a year ago, um, with, from California with a very specific intent to buying land. And the intention behind that was, my wife has a hobby around dog mushing, which she's got some attention for, whatever. Just in the spirit of that, dog mushing is something that involves, um, eight and eight dog team, to put that in perspective, and alternates as needed. And so, that's, that's something that she's passionate about, and something that's important to us. As a result, the animal code is important to us. We then approached the planning commission and presented our case, and, and some of this has come about as a result of that. As we've considered the potential of having more dogs, we've addressed what I believe, every, we've accommodated every possible concern that could be. The dogs will generally, generally be in an enclosed area. Um, the dogs will have, uh, in, on, in our, where we live, we can put the dogs in an area where we literally, there are literally no neighbors. Um, it would be roughly three acres away from any other home that, that is there. You, you mush with huskies, so they, they leave, right? They, they run if they get out. Um, so the enclosure prevents a lot of the concerns that the city has, both around noise and around kind of rabid dogs, or whatever it is. The final thing that I'll mention is, um, I, I believe in there, you addressed the code in the context of a six acre property and potentially sixty dogs. Having kind of witnessed the planning commission and the efforts they put into the animal code, there was, I would even use the term strict adhesion to kind of the U S code around the amount of space that an animal should have. Uh, and then the city council reduced all of those. Um, and so, there's significantly less, excuse me, there's, there's more animals that are available in a less amount of space, right? Thereby contradicting U S code, but enabling many, many animals, right? So, yes, a six acre lot would have sixty dogs, it could also have two hundred and forty chicken, you have twelve hundred pigeon. Like, some of those do seem unreasonable, um, although, but, but the optionality is what's important, right? We came here with intent to buy land so that we could do what we wanted with the land. I recognize the need for restrictions. And so, I would just ask that you consider, because there is no conditional permit, 'cause there's no option for someone that wants to, let's, let's just say, for example, I wanted twelve hundred pigeon, and I could build a facility that was absolutely perfect for all those pigeon, like, I, I could see why the city council would feel comfortable in me having the pigeons versus some, versus someone else. So, given the fact that the current code does not consider anyone who's gonna go above and beyond the measurements of, of the U S government, or in, in this case, the city of Elk Ridge, um, I would ask that you consider a max per acre on the larger lots, um, of two or three, right? Rather than, rather than, 'cause currently, the lot, if I have a one acre lot and I don't have livestock rights, and I have a one acre, one acre lot and I have livestock rights, I can have ten dogs if I don't have livestock rights. And the, the second, if I have livestock rights, the, the concept is to limit it to three. That just seems discriminatory. That seems, that, that doesn't, that doesn't make sense.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Great, thank you, Royce.
That's it.
That's all?
All right.
All right. Looking at me like you might wanna have something to say, somebody, I don't know if you do, you need to sign up real fast.
Can you sign up again?
Okay, we're moving on. Moving on.
I'm just saying it's gonna get ugly if everyone's noncompliant right now with life.
We're moving on. And we're moving on to the animal code amendment decision.
Let's get back to this.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make this really simple, because we've got it all typed up, it's here. When I make my motion, whatever is on the paper that I hand off to Royce,
is the.
that is it.
Are you touching A, or just?
If it passes. If it passes. Yeah.
You touching A and B?
Yep. And here, here, here's, here's why, okay? I think that we should add on to table, so, before I go forward with my motion, explain what I'm doing here. Cats and dogs, three max per acre on both tables.
Per acre.
Per acre. Either, either chart, so whether you got animal rights or you don't, it's the same.
But.
Per acre.
Okay.
Okay, I think that addresses the issue that you had, and when William and I talked about it, and in light of feedback that I've gotten from a few other residents, I think that's the best way to address it.
Three max per, not three max.
Per acre.
Per acre.
So, if you have two acres, you could have six.
But.
Okay, that's nice.
You, you can always have at least two.
And you would be able to have three cats and three dogs.
Okay.
Right?
If you got enough points, yeah.
Okay, that's, sorry, I wasn't, I was understanding if you're saying three max.
All right, that, that's, that's all we're doing, okay?
Three max per acre on dogs and cats, both.
Okay, so I'm, I'm, I'm writing, yes, I'm writing it down on here, and I'm, I'm going to make my motion.
Are the points going to adjust to?
Does that count, have a dog?
He redid the points.
The, the points have been.
Well, I know you changed the points, but in this, this point would increase the.
That counts anywhere in there for animals.
No, so you could still have other animals to, to use the rest of your points with, but.
Yeah, you can. Yeah, exactly, but I'm saying on, specifically on cats and dogs, your, your points right now would give you ten per acre. Are those points going to adjust? Or are you gonna leave the points where they are?
It's a good point, because you can only have.
Well, it isn't, because it affects the other, it affects the remaining points that you have for other animals.
Well, then you can slice and dice it any way you want, but at the end of the day, you still have X amount of points.
If, if it's ten, you would use thirty points, and you couldn't have any more than that, then if you had an acre lot, you still have seventy points to use on other animals.
So, you could have two cows and a.
If you have livestock.
A llama, and three dogs on an acre.
And a two-year.
Yep. And you're free, okay?
They're not in the list.
They're not in the list.
Everybody gets a bird eyes or spray.
Okay, okay.
Okay, make your motion. Let's, let's hear it.
All right, so I'm making a motion that we adopt table ten dash eighteen A and table ten dash eighteen B as laid out in the packet with the adjustment to three max per acre of cats and dogs on both tables.
Laid out in the packet means the red.
Yes, yep.
All you're changing on A is adding the max, correct?
Per acre, yep.
That's, I was just making sure, okay.
That's all I'm changing.
Okay.
Royce?
Is that simple and clear enough?
Second, that, seventeen dash eight.
Are you okay with that? And you know it's the table that has the red on it.
With the red, with the red.
I'm gonna do this. The voice is copy.
Does it, does it, let me just make sure this is clear. Is the, is the three max on each prorated by the lot size, or, or any lot can have three, three each?
No, not any lot.
No, that is, most you can have, you're still subject to the points, so if you've got a quarter acre, you're not, you're only gonna have twenty-five points. You can't have.
That's fine, I just, I just wanna make sure it's clear.
No, that's, so, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to budget your points.
You said three max per acre, you have to have a minimum of an acre.
That's right, to have three.
To have three?
You do.
No.
No. That's what you're, I think that's what you were kinda getting at.
Yes.
But then, but then, if, if we don't adjust the points corresponding to that.
I think that's what we're saying.
Then how, then it, at what point does this, this cut off? I'm just trying to figure out how to, I'm trying to make this easy for the, for the staff when it.
You got X number of points based on the acreage. You use it how you wanna use it till the points are run out. The number of cats, the number of dogs, the most you can have on any one acre is three. That's the most. If you choose, you've got thirty points, and you wanna have three dogs, you're done.
Okay.
So, you're done, you're done, you're done.
You can only burn thirty points of dogs.
Right, period. Even if you have fifty points, you can use fifty points per dog.
That makes sense, I, I see what Shay was asking.
No, I understand that, that's not, that's not my question.
But no, you would use thirty, and you'd still have twenty points left over for something else, instead of making each dog worth twenty points.
Yeah, I, I just wanna make sure we're clear, so that.
Okay.
Okay.
It's.
So, it's three max per acre for the minimum one acre.
Payson High Gradual can understand this.
We'll hold it. You're giving, well, better.
Yeah, A, I don't want to pay to ski on High Gradual, don't worry about the rest of it.
Okay, Nelson has made a motion to accept the, the proposed, uh, point values and square foot, and minimum enclosure square footage that's listed in the packet, with the one modification that we limit cats and dogs to a maximum of three per acre. You have to have a minimum of one acre to have three.
No.
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 Just maximum of three per acre.
Just maximum, yeah.
'Cause if you've got a half acre.
All right.
If I have a third acre, I can have three dogs.
You could have three dogs and ten cats.
I don't have an acre, now I have three.
All right.
Okay.
That's the motion.
I second.
Thumbs up?
Thumbs up, seventeen dash eight.
Trish second.
I just wanna get this done, so.
Uh, I want to go around the room individually and have a vote, so we'll start with Dale.
Aye.
Brittany?
No.
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, aye? Okay, four ayes to one. The ayes have it. Brittany, I know what you're gonna say, but I'll just say it anyway.
Yeah, I don't agree with the points on the animals, I think they're way too lenient.
Okay, anything else? Next item, Salem library card. Okay, so we looked at, we, so we, so here's where, so we, during the week, I don't know if it was this week or last week, we got thinking that, you know, if we could just go down to Salem and say, and have them, let them, let us sell Salem library cards, right? And we could subsidize it to whatever rate we wanted to subsidize it, and then we could just true up with Salem at some point, quarterly, or monthly, or whatever decided. So, we reached out with Salem and said, great idea. So, what we'd like to do right tonight is I'd like to, I would like to get a, get a budgetary decision is really what it is. We'd like to know, uh, their library cards are twenty-five dollars a year, what rate do we wanna subsidize it, and how much, how much can we, we'd like to have a, like, a thousand dollars to just begin this whole thing with, right? It'd be limited to a thousand dollars to subsidize.
So, twenty-five dollars for non-residents at Salem?
Twenty-five dollars for non-residents.
So, I think if we subsidized it at ten dollars, and then the residents would have.
So, we pay ten, and they pay fifteen.
I think that would be fair, and then we could subsidize a hundred residents, and with the book mobile, we had sixty-eight, and we're looking at a third the cost of the book mobile. And instead of only getting the use twice a month, you can use it a lot more, so I think we're getting, we can subsidize more residents at a cheaper cost and get more use. With that.
Okay.
Okay, so I have.
And the people I've heard back from on the book mobile that have, or been concerned about it, they would be happy to have a subsidy to a local library.
So, I have, I have one or two small points. First, this is great for those who don't already have a Salem card, that are Elk Ridge residents. Are we gonna do anything to try and figure out, okay, so that, we're, we're gonna draw a line, or say from this point forward.
Beginning, when we pass this motion.
Okay.
If there is one.
That's, that's question number one, and then question two is.
Makes it too, too complicated, and we're just moving forward.
No, I, the, the, the rate of twenty-five, I was given a different number.
Okay, twenty-five, right? Was it twenty-five more?
That's what it says on the website.
That's what it says on the website.
Well, that's what it says on the website, but what I was told was the portion of their property tax that goes to pay for it per household is $47 for the residents, so they may come back and give us a different number. I'm just giving you a heads up.
That's okay, we'll deal with it if they do.
Yeah, but I just, I just wanted to put that out there, because I did.
And by the way, we thought, with the subsidy, we could actually say, we could even make a deal with, you know, Pace and let them sell theirs and still subsidize it 10, and my, our residents 25.
And our residents could choose which library they wanted to go to.
We haven't gone down that path, but right now, what's that, what's it?
No, no, the librarian reached out to me because of the friends with her dad.
The Pace and, or the Salem?
Salem. She came and talked.
But if, but if you go down there right now, as an Elk Ridge city resident, they charge you 25.
Yep. Okay, I, I'm just, so.
So, what else, what was your other point?
Those were the points.
Okay.
That's it, so.
But, and we're gonna cap it off at 100? Why are we capping it off?
Because you're gonna only allow us to spend a thousand dollars.
I.
We can come back later, it's a big win, and everybody was good.
If it's a big win, I think if everyone pays property tax and more than 100 people want to do it, we offer it, we offer it.
This is a.
That's my opinion.
Remember, we have a budget.
No, I don't.
We passed the budget, we got to amend the budget. Take out the thousand dollars, right? Am I right?
That's correct.
That's fine, but what if it is?
I've been mayor here, I've almost got part of it figured out.
So, so, so what, what I think we're gonna have happen is those 68 people that are using their bookmobile will come get a card, and then we're probably gonna have, the thing is, we talked to Salem City Library to say, how many Elk Ridge residents are currently using your library? So, we could figure out how many residents are already paying for it, and they couldn't give us a number.
No, I know.
So.
Because some of us would hate Spanish work, and others are happy to pay Spanish work.
But I'm just saying, I, all I'm saying is, if, if we need more than 100, I think that that's something, if we're gonna offer it, we offer it.
When we run out, we'll, we'll bring it back to the council, how's that?
I'm, I'm saying that now, so when we bring it back.
Or the council can come to me and say, "I really want this on the agenda." Because I don't turn you down.
That would require like some extra.
Neurons?
If it aren't there, get the firm. Okay, okay, but I think that's great.
So, if I could get a motion to amend the budget with the amount of a thousand dollars for us to subsidize Salem City Library cards at a rate of $10 per card.
So stated.
I second it.
I need to have a, a roll call vote, is that true?
Yes.
We'll start over with Paul.
Aye.
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Brittany?
Aye.
Dale?
Aye.